All rise, hear ye, hear ye. The Hammond County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Bobby Hahn presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you for your attendance. I'll call on Commissioner Debbie Aghorn.
Yes, and the New Testament, John 16, verse 33, it says, "I have told you these things so that in me ye may have peace. In this world you will have trouble, but take heart; I have overcome the world." Those who pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for your peace. Lord, just praise your name for who you are and how you rose again before us, Jesus, because of your love. We ask you that you will help us to have camaraderie and will you help us to be servants as you were, Lord? We love you, and in your name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Aghorn. Mr. Doughty, will you listen to the pledge, please?
Post flag, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending on this April 24th, 2025. Mr. Walker, will you get the sheet for us, please? Do want to remind everyone to please mute your phones. Keep in mind that the rules for this commission, we do operate by Roberts' rules of order unless local rules do supersede. My thing's not working. My thing's not working.
Fourteen present.
Okay, we have a quorum, and we will begin. We'll start tonight. We do have one recognition. I'll ask Selena Lawson and her commissioner, Danny Bell, to meet me in the well. People's longevity around here. Forgot about Ms. Peggy.
Excuse me.
You sit there beside her. Thank you. We have with us Selena Lawson, who sits up here, and she's at work right now. Deputy clerk and passports, 25 years of service. Congratulations.
I just want to say that Selena is a very dedicated worker, and thank you for all your 25 years there. We appreciate you.
Then move down to item two, our public comments. We'll start with our non-agenda items. I do have one request for all commissioners and anyone speaking at the podium. Commissioners, if you'll lower your mics down and speak directly into them, and anyone that comes up to speak. The mic is real easy to readjust, so adjust it where it'll be comfortable for you. Anybody wanting to speak on non-agenda items?
I'm holding 8150 West Point Drive. I want to talk about my road department lawsuit. If these gentlemen would pay back their money that they owe that they were not entitled to yet with the private act, because the private act says if you do not attend the meetings, you are not supposed to be paid. And I don't understand why they didn't read the rules and abide by them. That's what we're supposed to do anywhere you work. So if they'll pay this money back, I'd be more than glad to set aside my lawsuit. But if they don't, I'm going forward with it. Because me, as a citizen that have worked all my life, I can't take money that don't belong to me, and neither should they.
Anyone else on non-agenda items?
Londoniwe 2343, Joe Stevens Road. Like to add one thing to the comments beginning this meeting, that you operate by Roberts' rules unless a local rule supersedes it. Actually, it would be also unless state law or the First Amendment and the Constitution supersede a local law or a local ruling. I would like to see you convene the Rules Committee again and look again at the rule regarding cameras, small cameras, small cell phones with no light, no noise, no waving around, but simply because someone would like to get a better view or only film portions, or for whatever reason. Let's quit being dictators and start trying to help and work with people and realize that being reasonable instead of being dictatorial is a far better way to operate. I would like to say one thing about a legal matter. I have a lawsuit that was filed about four hours ago or so, and it's regarding your opioid abatement committee, whoever's on that, and the meeting that they supposedly had on April 8th, and it's on your agenda tonight to vote on their recommendation to fund $20,000 to the Third Judicial Court Recovery Court Support Services. There's nothing wrong with that donation in itself, but it's the way it was handled. If there was no notice of that meeting, and that is my belief, or there was inadequate notice of that meeting, which I'm almost certain of, then that whole meeting was improper, illegal, and any action taken at that meeting is void. So in my view, you cannot take up something that's already void. And I'm not saying they can't go back and fix it. I'm just saying you're big on these laws, and I keep hearing la, la, la. Well, the open meetings law has been on the books for 50 years.
Thank you for your comments.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else on non-agenda items?
Joseph Hahn, 1400 Sheenbone Road. I want to share a story my father told me. It happened about 50 years ago or over. My father, Joe Frank Condon, was an elected Hammond County, which is now county commissioner, 50-some years ago. Shortly after he was elected, whoever was pushing the agenda in that timeframe come to my grandfather and said, "Will you talk to him," which my father, "and ask him if he will side with us?" My grandfather said, "You're on your own. You go see it. You go talk to him yourself." At that point, they finally got the courage to go talk to my dad, and they said, he said, "No, not in risk." They said, "Well, this is before we had trash trucks." They said, "You've got a big truck. Hire a driver. We'll guarantee, we'll put him on picking up trash five days a week." My father said, "I decline your offer." My dad said, "If I took their offer, then they had me being over the barrel to vote the way they wanted me to, and I declined." So saying that, I get to this point. When you get to researching how many checks some of these commissioners are drawing off of Hammond County, you'll see that it appears very well that they're being over the barrel to vote the agenda, whoever's putting the agenda, pushing the agenda has going at this present times. I know of some that is drawing up the three checks with this, on this. That's just what I hated to see that, but I seen it play out firsthand at last meeting here. And it's not about the citizens of Hammond County, every bit. All of us, it's about one person pushing the agenda. I just want to say that. Also, I'd say to Mr. Sheriff Mullins and Mayor Capps, I feel for you all, because in my opinion, you all are put in as foul guys for the Justice Center. But I hope you work together and can overcome this and that the previous administration before you that put you in that situation is wrong to put you in that situation, and I hope you overcome it, both of you. That's all I got to say about that.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else on non-agenda items?
Sandra Marshall, 5111 Union Grove Road. I just want to remind you in your Roberts' rules that you go by. It doesn't say that you have to be a citizen of Hammond County in order to speak. It just says a citizen or visitor can do non-agenda three minutes, no more than 30 minutes total. So it wasn't right last week. And I understand there's also behavioral rules in that, and we understand that as well. And so I think it's wrong you won't let Wendy speak if she behaves herself. So.
And I concede that. That was something that we had done in the past, but you are very correct. I concede that. And Ms. Wendy, if you can behave yourself.
We can be good. Okay, thank you so much.
I concede. Thank you. Anyone else on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll move down to next item, comments regarding agenda items. Again, you'll have three minutes.
Wendy Ellis, 598 Repito and 405 Ellis Lane, Washburn. Is that fine with y'all? I'm talking about the campers. I know that there is a lot of unsanitary campers here in the county, and they should be dealt with. But you punishing the people that are doing the best that they can and that they are hooked up to water, septic, light, sewer, all that, why you want to throw them out of their home on their own land? They have plans for this land, whether it's them living in a camper for now until they can save money to build their house, because they spent money on that land. They need time to build up money to do stuff, not just one year. I don't know of many blue collar workers that could build a house or save for a house in a year. You're talking about minimum wage is still 725. If these people that owns these lands, that are living in those campers, are still making minimum wage, how long do you think it's going to save up to buy them $100,000 trailer that it cost us now when back 15, 20, 30 years ago, it only cost us $20,000? I know y'all have a nice house, a warm bed to sleep in, but you're wanting to kick people out of their beds on their own land that are trying to do right? Now, the ones that are unsanitary, do something about it. Call the EPA. They'll be down here tomorrow. We got to start thinking about, and I'm going to say it, what would Jesus do? I've told you that I've spent this last year because he has called me to do this and to warn you. I'm not trying to threaten your lost Christianity. That's not what I meant if y'all took it that way. I have been told by God to warn you that y'all are doing stuff, and he's not liking it. And I'm obeying my Lord, because I don't want to feel his wrath if I don't. Would you? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have items on the agenda?
Donna F., 5719 Long Creek Road. This is to address campers on Leapers Ferry Road, 5750. It's detrimental impact of excessive camper overcrowding on the property compounded by the persistent worsening draining issues. These conditions have created an unsafe and attainable living environment for all the neighboring residents. Beyond general inconvenience and property damage, these issues have directly contributed to a chain of events that has devastated me, my family. Specifically, the lack of control and oversight on the property accumulated in a horrific accident where my daughter, a special needs child, was brutally attacked and mauled down by three of the dogs came from the property. Anyway, I think y'all know she was life flighted to UT Hospital where her heart stopped. Anyway, adding to this distress and directly illustrated the danger posed by the property owners, animals, and highlights the irresponsible and dangerous environment that has allowed to be here on the property. The aggression continues to this day. It's not only heartbreaking, but also clear indication of lack of safety and control on this property. While the horrific attack on my daughter is a distinct event, it is linked to the overarching issues of the overcrowded and lack of responsibility management of this property. I mean, I don't know how to explain to you people that the camper law has been a law. I don't know why we're bringing this back up, but I understand that people have to live in campers. Heck, I'm one paycheck away from living in a camper myself, but I have enough sense to know to do it the right way. Anyway, I would like for y'all to recognize the severity of these interconnected issues. The unsafe overcrowding, the unsanitary drainage impacting me, my father, and other neighbors. The danger posed by the aggressive dogs from the property and extended into my neighbor's yards. Attention is required to ensure the safety and well-being of neighboring residents to prevent further tragedies.
All right, thank you for your comments. Time's up. Thank you. Do we have anyone else with agenda items?
Joseph Hahn, 1400 Sheenbone Road, Rustville, Tennessee. Let's go down to these buildings and place some roofs and stuff on these buildings that's coming up. I hope that this committee has seen and gets a turnkey proposal from these people, because this is hilarious sickness watching off of this Justice Center that they come back in time and time again, change order, change order, change order, need more money, need more money, need more money. If we conducted our business the way that happened, we'd be out of business. So I hope that this committee has reviewed, and these people that placed this bid know that they do not, don't bring change orders back to the Hammond County Commissioners asking them for more money. Going on to the camper situation, I've heard people speaking it about it's infringing against their constitutional rights. I'll agree with that. I've also heard myself and others say, "By imposing these rules, regulation, laws, whatever you want, however you want to word it, the people cannot afford to buy a $200,000 home. They can't afford to buy a $300,000 home." But they're doing the best they can. I agree that they all ought to have septic, water, and electric. They ought to comply. They ought to pay taxes. They ought to be some kind of permit. EPA will be here tomorrow. Trial services will be here tomorrow if it's reported. They handle that without us putting additional rules and regulations into place in Hammond County, which also affects the people that sells these camper recreational products throughout this world. You're saying, by saying this, you're saying to them, "We do not want this in Hammond County." Whether or not you like artificial intelligence or not, I don't know who keeps the planning board's website answer questions up. But as today, in the questions center, it says campers are forbidden. I've not found a law or regulation in Hammond County, but it's on their website. If you need that information, I can provide it to you. Thank you for your call.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Anyone else on agenda items? Let's move on.
Londoniwe 2343, Joe Stevens Road. I think what we're seeing and what I've been hearing for over a year now is, again, so many things are being brought up when the camper issue comes up. We're all concerned about safety, whether it's sanitary conditions, whether it's a dog issue, whatever it may be. But again, we get back to we need reasonable rules, and we need to realize and separate the issues. This dog issue should have been taken care of a long time ago and not by the Planning Commission, but by animal control or law enforcement, whomever. This idea that there is just all this raw sewage out. If there is, it needs to be taken care of by a call or repeated calls. I hear that, you know, they don't come out or they don't take care of it. Then keep picking up the phone. Keep going higher and higher and higher. Nobody should have to live with raw sewage around. That's a given. But how do we take care of it? With reasonable rules and enforcement. We've been talking about 20 or 30 years we've had this camper regulation. Well, no wonder people have ignored it or they don't know about it, number one. It wasn't enforced, so they were never told. And then there are questions about whether we had definitions that supported our rule throughout the years, and that's really why that whole issue came up a year ago of we're going to define what a camper is and define what an RV is, because we had deficient regulations. So when you look at it today, please think of the people who are doing the right thing, who are trying their best, and it may not be like you would like them to. I know we had a story last meeting about people, you know, they're just not doing the right thing. And there are people that don't do the right thing. And when it affects someone else, we need to do something about it. But leave the people alone that are in the campers that are just surviving, that are taking care of the sanitation, and hopefully are allowed to have water and electricity if they choose. They wouldn't have to have it, but, you know, a lot of people would choose to have water and electricity as well. Just be reasonable.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items?
I didn't give my name and address, but I have a question. We've had enforcement for years. Why ain't the laws being enforced? I mean, you make them, but you don't enforce them. So why make them if you ain't going to enforce them? It's not doing any good. I've complained. I've even took pictures to Mr. McKinnon. For years, that's one reason why I moved out of my community, because I couldn't get nothing done. It's sad. Well, it is. It's my community. I still love it, but I don't have to live there, thank God, no more. And none of you's cared about it, none of you's. I've known it ever since I've been a kid. So if you're going to make laws, enforce them.
Anyone else on agenda items? Move down to item three, confirmation of reappointment to the Civil Service Board. Commissioners, you have a memorandum. Read over that from the mayor, Mayor Cutshaw, and also Sheriff Mullins. And they are recommending the reappointment of David Beckner of Moorestown to the County Civil Service Board for a term to expire in August 31st, 2028. Mr. Beckner is a retired captain of the Moorestown Police Department, 38 years' service as a sworn law enforcement officer. He also served four years in the U.S. Marine Corps. He has agreed to continue to serve on the Civil Service Board if approved. So we have a nomination of David Beckner for reappointment to the Civil Service Board. Any comments?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Horner? We have a second. Mr. Horner. Technical difficulties. We'll vote on this in a second. So we have a motion for Thomas Doty, a second by Tim Horner to approve David Beckner. Vote the motion.
13 yeas, one abstain.
So the motion passes. David Beckner will retain his seat on the Civil Service Board. Thank you. Move down to item number four, the Calendar Rules Committee. Chairman Thomas Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is the approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? Vote the motion.
13 yeas, one abstain.
Item 4B is approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? Let's vote the motion.
14 yeas, zero nae.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Doty. We have no items to be removed from the consent calendar. So move down to approval of the consent calendar.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments or discussion? Let's vote the motion.
14 yeas, zero nae.
Motion passes. Moving down to item number seven. We will recess as the Hammond County Legislative Body and open public hearing on Resolution 25-08. A resolution to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District 05, tax map 48, parcel 066.01, Maple Valley Road, Moorestown, Tennessee 37814, from A1 to I1. We now close the public hearing. Reconvene as the Hammond County Legislative Body. Uh, rezoning resolution, uh, resolution 25-08. A resolution to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District 05, tax map 48, parcel 066.01, Maple Valley Road, Moorestown, Tennessee 37814, from A1 to I1. And then a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, Mr. Doty. We have a second. Ms. Ahern, any discussion on this? Let's vote the motion.
13 yeas, one nae.
Motion passes. Move down to item nine. We'll recess as the Hammond County Legislative Body and convene as the Hammond County Beer Board. Item A, beer permit for H and M Food Mart. Retal- Mr. Patel. 4450 Inca Highway, Moorestown, Tennessee 37813. Now reconvene as the Hammond County Legislative Body. We'll be voting on beer permit for H and M Food Mart. Mr. Patel, 4450 Inca Highway, Moorestown, Tennessee 37813. Need a motion?
So move.
We have a motion, Mr. Horner. Have a second. And we have a second, Mr. Walker. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in going over this application, item 19. It says gives the name of the owner and address of the nearest residential dwelling to your business. Uh, Mr. Patel puts his address, his name and address here, and the closest residential dwelling, he says, is Lowland Baptist Church, 4465 Inca Highway. There's a conflict here. If it's going, if, if his address is the closest, uh, I've got a problem. The application is incorrect.
So you're saying that he, how, how far away is the church?
The church is right straight, directly across the street from it.
And his house is?
He says his house is 526 Cliff Street. I don't know exactly where Cliff Street is. Behind John H. School.
Okay, where is this market?
It's, uh, it's just, uh, south of Exit, uh, Exit 12.
Oh, so it's a distance away.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, we do have a-
I've got a problem.
We do?
General.
Any other comments or discussion on this? Anyone wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that we table this until we get the application filled out correctly.
Okay, we need to withdraw our motion in second.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Walker. Mr. Horner, do you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Mr. Walker, you do. Okay, we have a motion now on the floor to table this until we get some non-conflicting information. And we, we have a motion from Mr. Long. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Horner?
Oh. Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed, there you are. So we have a motion, a second. Anyone else have anything they want to say about this? Okay, we'll have to vote this off the board?
Debbie Ahern?
Are we voting, I want to vote yes to table it.
Table, yes, to table it, yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harbald?
Yes.
Bobby Hawn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. This is tabled until we get further non-conflicting information. Mr. Bell, thank you very much. Move down to item 11, the Justice Center Public Safety Committee. I'll call on Chairman Tim Horner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 11A, the Construction Change Directive, number two, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion.
I'm sorry, who, who made the motion on?
Uh, Mr. Horner.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Very good. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote the motion. Oh, wait a minute, excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. Howell.
Thank you, sir. I was out on, um, oh, golly, Silver City Road, and I was noticing that, um, school buses go on that road and, and the drop-off is a heck of a lot more than, um, this, this $20,000 issue. And, um, um, it, it just kind of grated me that we have school buses and all kinds of traffic going much faster than they'll go around our, um, our jail. And I'm kind of astonished that we're, you know, I, I understand it might not look great. I don't know how many people are going to go zippity-doo-dah through there. But, uh, good golly, on some of these roads, we don't have guardrails and, um, anyway, it just hit me yesterday when I was out driving to look at all kinds of things and, and notice that, so. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, let's vote the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Green.
You're fine, sir. I'd just like to reiterate that we still need the report from the contract attorney to know where we stand. This is an additional amount of money. And I'm like some of our taxpayers, I'm tired of seeing them come with a change order for more money. Back when I was campaigning for this seat, I was told by one of the guys that ran for the clerk's job that that's the way you made your money. You bid it, and then you done a change order to add more money to it. It's about time we asked for my accountability, sir.
Okay, I think Mr. Do Water addressed that when he was here last. About time it's coming.
Hope it gets here soon.
I'm sorry?
Hope it gets here soon.
Yes, ma'am.
It's long overdue.
Anyone else? All right, let's vote the motion.
10 yeas, four nae.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. Move down to item 12, Finance Committee. Chairman Rodney Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go to item 12A. It's a bid tabulation for the 2025 Hornet Alley Pavilion Roof Siding Guttering Project, ITB 2025-02 at Cherokee Park. It's by English Mountain Construction Company. It would be for $41,553. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments, questions? Vote the motion.
14 yeas, zero nae.
Motion passes.
Go to item 12B, Resolution 25-09. It's a resolution authorizing Hammond County to apply for a Tennessee Highway Safety Office-sponsored 2026 High Visibility Grant of $10,000, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Green.
One question. That's no match, correctly?
Correct. That's not a match?
That's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else? Vote the motion.
14 yeas, zero nae.
Motion passes.
Go to 12C, the renewal of the Hammond County Sheriff's Department's slip and mooring lease agreement with Cherokee Boat Dock LLC. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Green?
Pair of conversation last time about indemnifying. I saw the initial copy for what we got, and I appreciate it. But my concern is, when we brought this up last year, they said it was up to the liability and it was left in place. Why are we not having our county attorney go over contracts that could leave us liable and our taxpayers liable for money that they should not be liable for? At some point, we're going to have to have some accountability. And evidently, for this to come out like it has, we don't have it. So I would like to see in the future all contracts go through the attorney. I've not got a legal mind. I wish I did. But we need to be having this checked. I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but that's what we've got a county attorney for.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to address anything?
Uh, the county attorney has looked at it since. It was an oversight. It was taken care of last year. We moved through. Everybody in this body voted for last year. It basically the same thing, but this year to satisfy the request, which was right to request that. This indemnity clause does not apply to Hammond County or any of its offices, including the Hammond County Sheriff's Department. We feel that that will be added moving forward. It's back to the, uh, the owners of the boat dock. And, uh, moving forward, this should be our language in this contract. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Neesmith?
In saying that, it was a, it was an error that it didn't happen. But I think we should some way set it, any contract that holds our county liable, that that goes direct to our attorney and let him make a decision. I'm a cowboy. I can't make that decision. It shouldn't come to me to make a decision. We should listen to what our attorneys have to say.
We, we agree, Mr. Neesmith. Absolutely. Yes, sir. And we've done that. This was an oversight because we had passed it last year. It was an oversight in the fact that we did, we assumed it was the same thing that we done last year. That was an oversight. We've taken care of that mistake.
Any other questions? Ms. Green?
I'd like to point out that that oversight was brought up last year, but it was let go on through.
Okay, it's been corrected?
Ma'am, we, we corrected that last year and voted on it in this body. It was not put in the contract. Uh, forgive us for that. I'm trying to tell you, we made a mistake, and we now have it in the contract moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Vote the motion.
14 yeas, zero nae.
Motion passes.
Move to 12D. It's an inter-local agreement between Hammond County, Tennessee, and the Hammond County Highway Department for the performance of road work in Cherokee Park, Moorestown, Tennessee. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Neesmith?
Do we have a price on that, what it's going to cost? I've never seen anything.
Mr. Neesmith, uh, the, the, the figure that we have right now is $200,000. Anything over that, they would-
Much.
That's, that's the figure right now that they can do work up to that point. If it's over that amount, they come to this body for any, any additional work. From time to time, the county road department is asked to go in there and just do a little work, patch a hole, do the, you know, just different things. And we, uh, Superintendent Wise-Cover felt like it was best to have this memorandum of understanding to keep everybody on the same page.
Anyone else? All right, let's vote the motion.
13 yeas, one nae.
Motion passes.
12E is the Hammond County proposed spring paving road list that was presented last Monday. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion, Mr. Long. Do we have a second? We're going to have to do this off the board.
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Bell. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Debbie Ahern? Yes. Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harbald?
Yes.
Bobby Hawn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
12F, the OPIT Abatement Committee Funding Recommendation. That is for the Third Judiciary District Recovery Court Support Services. District Recovery Court Support Services, and that would be an amount of $20,000, and I do put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion or question? Ms. Green?
Thank you, Commissioner Hong, Chairman Hong, my apologies for the incorrect title. From what Ms. Trish sent me, this meeting had no public notice. Therefore, it would be invalid. I, I would think there would be others that would be interested in that as well, and I can't see rectifying it by voting on it, when I am sure there was a lawsuit filed on it this morning. Because technically, we will have no jurisdiction, that'll be up to the courts if I understand correctly what happened with the road commission deal when we were talking about that. So, I, I don't see this, and all meetings should have public notice. We, we need to abide by that law, as it's been brought out by several citizens today, that's been on the books for years, we just need to abide by the rules.
Mr. Mayor, will you address that?
I understand we are, uh, being served on a lawsuit on this one, but I do have a couple of comments as far as, uh, if this body makes any recommendations and moves forward, and it, and it's determined that's what's happened. I think it was already owned up that a mistake was made in this regard, I can't, I can't comment that. Former Mayor Britton, um, he, he had, he first had the sole authority to make recommendations to this body on how to spend opioid abatement money. He had the sole authority. He, he thought it was best to form this committee and make recommendations. This body has voted on every recommendation and passed every recommendation that's been brought from that committee. The latest one, one of the latest ones, uh, is, is in your pocket, it's, and the question was brought up, uh, who your committee members are on this. Well, it's a matter of record, and if you'd read your packets, you would know this. It's already there. And I didn't feel that it was time to waste and provide committee members when it's there before you. It's in the minutes. That said, um, moving forward, we'll just have to see how this works out with a lawsuit. I had more to tell tonight, but since we're under lawsuit, I've been advised to keep it to myself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. It, we, we had a, we had a glitch with the beer board, and, and so it's gone back to be cleared up. I would think that in, this is a glitch, and this can be cleared up, um, and we certainly do not enjoy nor need another lawsuit, and if, if holding this for a little bit would clear that up and serve both, why not?
Ma'am, we're under lawsuit, we're already undersued. Mistake's been made, all I'm saying is, if this body were to move forward, and there is an issue, it can reverse that action by ratifying any actions that's been done by this committee. Okay, they can do that. This body can make a motion to accept all motion or all recommendations that this body's already voted on and ratify those. So, it's not like, it's, it's not a nefarious idea that's going on, okay? This body has been a part, this commission has been a part of any money that was given to us. By the way, it's not taxpayer money that came in, it was settlement money. You understand it? I mean, it's not taxpayer money. However, we, we're under guidelines of how we can use some of that money. This body has approved every penny that's been used. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me make one comment to, but, Mr. Mayor, this is not taxpayer money, this money came from the pharmaceutical companies during the lawsuit, okay? The board that was set up was set up independently of our government to look into the needs, uh, to help our community, and we have, I'm not done running the numbers, but we know it costs about $40 a day to house an inmate. And so that's, I don't know, what, $1,300 a year or 13, I don't know, do the math. They've run successfully over 100 people through that, and if those people just average five years on their sentence shaved off, the math, do the math, I mean, it's a very large sum of money that they're taking away from the county, plus each one of those individuals pay $1,000 for that opportunity, out of their pockets, prior to graduation. Now, we're not trying to make money off of this, but we are trying to support an effort that is gonna get people out of jail, and the recidivism rate is about 134 people and only like two, maybe three. So, it's really been successful, it's a big money savings for the county, there's, as the mayor said, there's nothing nefarious going on. This board was set up to make, didn't have to set it up, the mayor could've continued to do what they were doing, but this was set up, and I think it's pretty nitpicky for people to try to make judgment on folks doing the right thing that are not a part of our county government. So, anyway.
May I make one more?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to add, you know, that these programs that this money does go to, just as the chairman has said, is to prevent or help with recidivism, to get families back in order. That, that's what that's, part of this money is about. Currently, the cost to keep one state inmate, felony charged state inmate, $110 a day. We receive $41, so every person we can help and bring them out of the jail, using this money in those, uh, in those areas is, is a certain help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Long?
I'd just like to remind everyone, last week, we had someone come to the podium and said that they felt like the people that was responsible for these people, being on drugs were, should be paying the bill. Well, that's what this opid money is, pharmaceuticals, you know, paying the states and it's debited out to the counties. We have voted for this in the past, we voted for this before we knew about the meeting, and I'd still recommend that we move forward with it.
Mr. Neesmith? There's no doubt in my mind that this money is, is going for a good cause, but rules are rules. Rule says you gotta have a meeting 10 days before. My say, I vote no, I go with the rules we got. We got rules, start breaking rules in the middle of the street, it's not gonna work. If I have a rulebook, you don't go with the rules.
Well, we're just trying to determine if this falls under those rules.
I beg your pardon?
We're trying to determine if this falls under those rules. That's the question. Nobody's trying to break a rule or circumvent a rule. We wouldn't do that, we have no need to do that.
Although a rule was broken, though.
Well, we don't know that.
Well, they didn't have a meeting.
Vote.
I don't think so.
Never mind. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We're gonna have to vote this off the board also, because of technical difficulties, uh, everyone is free to vote their conscience.
I would like to amend the motion to table this till the lawsuit is settled through the courts.
We have a, we have a motion to table. Dies because of a second, we'll move forward. Madam Clerk, call the roll, or call the vote. Wayne?
I don't think it's gonna do us any good to table it, they need that money now, but there's a way to go get that money, and that's go with the rules to get it. You table it, fight for a lawsuit, that could be six months down the road before that lawsuit takes effect. It could be a year, who knows how long it's gonna be, they need that money now. But they need, need to come back. I don't know how to have a meeting now.
Okay, let's move forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Horner?
Can we get counsel?
Yes, sir.
Here's, you know, I've been over here biting my tongue, I've got three or four holes in it.
Ask him if he'll speak from the podium, please.
What I understand has been filed is a suit alleging a violation of the Open Meetings Act, okay? The law on the book says if you take action, uh, in violation of that act, that that act has, that that action is void, just as Ms. Noe said in her comment earlier, okay? That can be remedied, she pointed out that it can be remedied. They can have another meeting, we can have it properly noticed, they can have a meeting, they can do exactly what they did before without the notice meeting. I think it's, I think it's ironic that Mr. Britton formed a committee when he had no need to, but he did, and they had a meeting, and apparently, it's alleged that it wasn't properly noticed, and so, I, I would suggest that this can be remedied very quickly, hopefully make this lawsuit go away, to publicly notice a meeting, have a proper notice, have a proper meeting, have a proper recommendation, have a proper vote by this body to accept it, and if it's 30 days, it's 30 days. I don't know what the timeframe would be.
Thank you for your advice. Mr. Capps, thank you. Does that bring us back to where we're at now? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Green?
I'm, I would be happy to withdraw my motion, Chairman, and for what he said, and, and I agree with, with what he was saying, okay?
Ms. Aher?
I'll be quite honest, I am very confused in what we're voting for right now. I think we're voting for what Mr. Long said, that we're going to accept this and we're going to move on.
Yes.
Because I'm getting ready to vote, I want to make sure I'm clear of the understanding, because there have been several...
Well, we had a motion to table, there wasn't a second, so it died without a second, so right now, the motion on the, uh, floor to be voted on is exactly what Mr. Long had read. Okay? Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. I would just suggest that we go along with what our county attorney just told us. We can put it off, uh, and put the notice in the paper the next day and have the meeting and, and, um, in 10 days, and, and then, golly, we'll be back and vote it in. We don't want them to be without the money. What we want is to follow the rules. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that. Ms. Doty?
Was that a motion, Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, it was.
I will second her motion.
I don't want her motion. Please restate your motion, Ms. Howell.
Yeah, help me restate.
Was to follow the recommendation of the county attorney.
Table, to table the motion?
No, to...
To hold, to hold it, would you say, in abeyance? Mr. Capps?
Hold, I'm sorry.
Hold this in abeyance or to table? What would be the correct term?
I, I would say that, uh, I mean, if, if a motion had been made, it can either be tabled or you can vote to withdraw the motion, either way, but it, it needs to be, have the, just, if you don't want to have a vote, you can table it until, until proper notice and proper meeting and proper voting.
So, we have a motion.
Withdraw.
Table, and we have a second for Mr. Doty. Table the motion?
Until what time is we can have a motion?
Such time as, as we have all the...
Proper notice.
Is dotted and T's crossed.
Okay.
Okay? So, what do we do on our original motion? Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Mr. Long, you withdraw?
Well, when you table a motion, you basically set it aside anyway, so you're, you're good.
Thank you. So, we have on the table now, or on the floor now, is to table the original motion until such time that we get all the, everything smoothed out with the meeting, the notice, and everything, okay? And we're gonna have to do this off the board. So, table a motion. Madam Clerk?
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed Nigre?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesia?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now come back and do it right.
Please move forward. Go to 12G, be the construction bids for the health department, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? We have to vote it off the board. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed Nigre?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesia?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Go to 12H, is a request to amend the original spending plan for the ARPA proceeds, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk? Oh, Ms. Green?
Thank you, Commissioner Hong. I would still like to reiterate, this would be a good time, we need paving money, gonna be a long time before we get paving money built up to be able to take care of our roads. It would be a good fund to move it to for our paving, instead of the general fund. If I remember what Ms. Amanda said, it could be moved there, there was no restrictions, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we really need the paving, we are in desperate need of that. Our roads are horrible, even Sneebull roads are better than ours are.
Well, I disagree with that, but we're at, uh, on the eve of budget time, so we need to move this in for a fine balance, and then we'll go with our paving process out of the budget. Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk?
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed Nigre?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesia?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Go to 12I, Budget Amendment, Hammond County Department of Education School Nutrition Program Budget Amendment, number one, an increase of $1,094,000, I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. And we have a second. Any questions? Vote to motion.
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed Nigre?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Warner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesia?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Go to I, number two, is the Hammond County Department of Education Budget Amendment, number six, an increase of $13,000, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Ed Nigre?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?[1800.83]
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niesma?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I, number three, the Hammond County Department of Education Budget Amendment, number seven, with the increase of four hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk? Row.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niesma?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Go to I, four, Fund 101, miscellaneous with the county mayor's office of one hundred thousand dollars. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. So I'm, I'm guessing this is the one with the, uh, the broadband ready, uh, community grant, a hundred thousand. Is that right? That's it? Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. Anyone else? Call the row.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niesma?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Go to I, five, Fund 101, the Parks and Fire Board, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, Ms. Clerk.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niesma?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman Long.
Go to item five, six, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and five cents. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any discussion? Call the row, Madam Clerk?
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niesma?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Fourteen.
My motion passes.
All have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Long. Move down to item thirteen, RV Camper Study Committee. Chairman Kyle Walker.
Item thirteen A, Draft Vision B of the Recreational Vehicle, Vehicle Camper Tiny Home Regulations. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
That's not the right one yet.
Oh, go on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, wait a minute, let's get this. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
No, we don't have a second yet.
Yeah, looking for a second. There it is. Thank you, we have a second. Uh, Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. I, I'm just pretty well convinced that a lot of camper issues could be taken care of with a codes officer. If, uh, it sure works in the city. If you have trash out here, by golly, in two days, you'll get a horrifying letter that tells you to show up with all kinds of money or remove it. And most people remove it. And if, if, if the problem is neighbors who can't take... We, we provide three hundred thousand for our humane society, and the city does too. That's a gob of money. For, for dogs and cats, you got me? So six hundred thousand dollars goes for dogs and cats. Good golly. Um, I would think we could, uh, we need an officer who, we need somebody to come and get the bad dogs. And codes, if, if, if there is sewer, there, there are regulations, state regulations for that, and it could take care of that. And I just feel like we're, maybe we ha... Maybe, there's no maybe about it. We've let it go on and on, and I feel like that if we... What would you say, set the dogs on? If we, if we got codes officers after this, there would be, a lot of citizens who are doing everything right could continue, and those who aren't would have to come up with a Plan B. Now, I went by a setting yesterday that, golly, there were three campers in a mess and, um, and, and I can understand how neighbors would be, I would be irate. And it is a problem, but, um, I feel like we're stepping into somebody's property and saying, this is how you need to live. And, uh, that might be, what have we been hearing, overreach? But to take care of a lot of the issues, uh, if we can spend six hundred thousand, or us three hundred, and the city three hundred, and get, uh, if we could get a codes officer who would go out every day and check on the ones that are not picking up the trash, who don't have the sewer, running the plug from who knows where'sville, it would probably take care of a lot of the issues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Howell. Ms. Green?
Thank you. First of all, I agree with Mr. Doughty, this is overreach. Second of all, lady brought up the con, the concept of the dogs. We have animal control, why aren't they doing their job? To be brutally honest, if they had attacked my child, and I had my pistol in my pocket, I'd have dropped the dog. And I wouldn't have hesitated, whether it was my child or my green child. But animal control should have taken care of this. They need to do their job. Now, as far as campers and sewage, there is wa... There are ways to take care of sewage. Ms. Howell and I had a long conversation, and I was raised as poor as anybody in here. We didn't get water till I got to high school, inside the house. But we still took our baths in a wash tub, we still cooked, cleaned, and took care of things. But we had outdoor facilities. If they take care of their sewage, they can, they can haul in water, folks. But a roof over their head is the main thing. I don't see, this is overreach to say the very least of the matter. We do not have a six-point thirteen section in our regulations at all. And I went to look before this meeting today, and I thought possibly we did when I went to reading the references. This is a whole new section that we didn't have before, according to what I was told. Now, I don't see a need for it. We don't have a problem if they just do their job. If we have a problem with the dogs, let animal control take care of it. If, if where they're at, they're not able to take care of it, pink slip 'em and get somebody that will take care of it. If codes enforcement needs to step in and there's a problem otherwise, let 'em do their job. If you need extra help, call. I don't see why we cannot handle a problem instead of making an additional problem with overreach, because if you start on this, you may get into the same thing they got into years ago, saying that grass could not get so high around farm machinery. And I was one of the lucky recipients of that citation. And they, they found out it was illegal and they could not do it. Just a minute, please, sir, let me finish what I was saying. I know you believe in Robert's Rules of Order, but they, years ago, they tried this. They decided that it was illegal and they couldn't do it. We need to step carefully.
Mr. Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've been the most vocal one on this from minute one. I've asked numerous times for it to be passed, for we could just hook 'em up properly and let people live their life on their property. It's been said that there's a two, two-year waiting list to get into public housing. What if the people that own that property don't want to live in public housing? They purchased property. They purchased it for their own use, for their own enjoyment, for their own betterment. Who are we to say what's better for them and what's not? Yes, there was a situation that was brought up in our last meeting about some children running around in raw sewage and such. I can promise you, with the DHS background that I live in on a daily basis, my wife being over juvenile, if DHS, DCS, or any of those agencies had been called to this, those children would have been removed at that moment. Had nothing to do with the house. Theirs built structures out there. As one person told me, in a neighborhood that runs a water hose out their window with a funnel on the inside to urinate in. And, so it's nothing to do with a camper. We don't need to hurt the people that are trying to live right on their own property and enjoy what's theirs. But past the living in a camper, the storage regulations is just, to me, is ridiculous. I've asked, I've begged, and I ask you all again to vote no on this, because we don't need to be telling people how they can store their campers and where they can store them. It said can't store more than two. I understand. They can't store more than two. But who are we to tell them they can't? Are we gonna tell them that they can't store horse trailers, cattle trailers? We're not saying it to residents, we're saying on any property, they can't have but two. So they can't have them at their barn and have more than two? I just think it's way overreach, and again, I ask you all to vote no on this, because I don't feel our county needs it.
Mr. Harville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to separate sections on storage, which is Section A, and the permanent living sections, B through D, that we vote on those separately.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Harville to separate the living in a camper, RV, tiny home, from the storage aspect of it. Okay?
I second.
I'm sorry?
I second.
Ms. Howell seconded that. Mr. Doughty, what do we need to do with the calendar on that?
It's fine, we'll just move it.
We'll take that up later, okay? So we have a motion for Mr. Harville on separating the two. We have a second for Ms. Howell. So let's take care of that.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hexton?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
No.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Niesma?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
No.
Motion does pass, we'll separate the two. I'm hearing a lot of the word overreach, I've heard it. And I know what overreach means. Let me, let me just say this. I'm getting people saying, okay, we, we, we need to do this. We need to make them clean up their sewer, sewage. We need to make them do this. Um, when they moved their camper on there, they knew it was not permissible. Or should have. I think I've heard the term ignorance, if the law is no excuse. But where do we draw the line on the overreach? Where do you draw that line? You know, we, we, we don't have any clear-cut, um, definition of where the line is. And I understand in, in theory, but in practice, I don't know where you draw the line. I don't know where you can say, you gotta put sewage in, septic tank in, and I've said this before, that's gonna cost a ton of money, to put a septic tank in, fill line in, and that's if the, if the land perks, if it's approved. To put a septic tank in, fill line in, and that's if the, if the land perks, if it's approved. When somebody say, well, they can put an outdoor toilet in, well, the same thing applies. The land has to perk. So there are obstacles to go through, and we're, we're saying overreach. People should be able, allowed to do what they want to do. And I've said this, we've got 67,000 people, and we're to represent those people. And I can, I think I can say this for myself and for anybody else, if I had a camper beside me that was running raw sewage on the ground, there would have been something drastic of happen. Ms. Green said she would have shot the dog without a second's notice. Is that overreach? So when we use that term "overreach" and we talk about reasonable measures, I don't know that, that there's a definition, a clear line, that we can get 14 people to agree where you draw that line. Now, I consider myself a blessed individual, I sleep comfortable every night. And I guarantee you, there are people in this town drive by my house saying, I wouldn't live in it, duck. So we gotta be real careful when we're throwing out words like "overreach" and "reasonable" because they are so vague. And they will be interpreted in a thousand different ways. So I think we have to be really careful with that, or we're going to get jammed up. I've had some discussions, but the planning commission is brought to us, the clock will start ticking today, and in two years, somebody said, well, maybe they don't want to live in public housing. And I understand that. And that's too much overreach. But we have to, you know, we have to consider, I know we, we have people that, you know, want the best life they can have. But right now, they're in violation. And some of them are really in violation. So we have to consider these things. So I want you to really think about reasonable and overreach. Because I promise you, the way you like your scrambled eggs probably is the way I like my scrambled eggs. But they're both eggs, and they're both scrambled, but they're probably different. So let's keep that in mind when we're throwing these words out. You have to be able to define what you mean. Mr. Walker. Again, I just want to ask the commission that what we are voting on is not the rules of can a person live in a camper or not. What we are voting on is what the planning commission brought forth to us. Do we allow them the additional time to seek adequate housing or a different form of housing to rectify the situation that's going on? Or do we say, as of tomorrow, we stand by our building codes, which states in the building codes, a camper is not a livable structure? And there is no codes in the state of Tennessee, any county's building codes, that allows for camper living. Yes, there are counties that allow it with their building codes that say you can't live in a camper. But there is no building codes out there that says a camper is a permanent or made-for-permanent living out there. All we're doing is, are we going to give them by saying, a yes vote, the added time? Or are we going to say no to have to start enforcing this tomorrow? And again, it's going to be, does our attorney start taking action tomorrow? I don't know. But if we say no, he can start taking action as soon as he's ready. Okay? That's what we, we've been tasked to devote on, not anything else. And that's all I'm asking you to look at. I agree with Mr. Doughty and the storage of campers, but we also have to think, in a residential neighborhood, should somebody have three campers in their backyard in a residential zone? In agricultural, I agree, if I've got 15 acres, I ought to be able to have more than two campers, I ought to be able to have my farm equipment, my cattle trailer, a car hauler, whatever I want to. But in my subdivision, should I be able to put three campers in my backyard, two car haulers, two cattle trailers, my lawnmower trailer and everything else where I'm infringing on my next door neighbor? No. Because that's not what a residential zone was designed for. But again, everybody has their own opinion.
Mr. Harville.
Well, part of that is, is why I asked for these to be separated, so that we could look at this. I would like to make a motion to accept the regulations on the storage of campers with the following changes. Because I think there's some, some issues with this. So if y'all want to be looking at this to keep up, I think we need to add the word "direct" in front of "family" in A.
I said it again, I'm sorry, I didn't get you.
In, in A, you need to add the word "direct" in front of "family." The camper must be owned by the property owner of record or owned by the direct family of the property owner of record. And by definition, direct family would be father, mother, brother, sister, son, or daughter. Everybody all right with that?
Don't want to include grandchildren?
No. You gotta, you gotta draw, you know, we're talking about drawing lines, we gotta draw a line somewhere. That means that you can drop, you can cross out B, no more than two campers may be stored on a property, strike that out. You've already put a limit on it with that first thing. Only the property owner, all right, and only the direct family. Campers may only be stored in R1, R2, and A1 zones. I'd be all right with taking R1 and R2 out of there, but there are a lot of folks that do store campers there, so. Campers cannot be stored in front of residents, period. Take off that or side facing any street. Now, there is a variance to get around that there. A variance due to topography may be requested through the Board of Zoning Appeals. That means you can strike out then two. I don't think you ought to ask, be able to store something in your driveway. We store boats, we store campers, there's all kinds of things stored beside people's houses in their driveways. I don't think we need to be telling people that. E's okay. F, F comes to that brief connection via a hose to expect for leaks is allowed. If you're going to talk about water being allowed there, I think you need to put a, a thing in there to say that connection to electrical services is allowed for maintenance purposes as well. Those will be my changes. I'll put that in the form of motion. And I'll answer any questions about that, I know that was quick.
Kyle?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute, we got Mr. Neesmith first.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Neesmith?
Mine was, mine has been answered because we're going to separate the two.
Ms. Howell?
Yes. Second one come up later.
Right.
Okay. There are, I, I, now, this was in the city, but I happened to notice somebody had kind of a, two driveways, and they put their camper here and then their cars operating here. So, I mean, it sort of was in their driveway, but I just wanted to mention that, but, okay.
It's in the driveway.
It's in the driveway.
Let's don't muddy the water.
Okay.
Our first motion by Mr. Walker was the original motion.
Right.
And it was seconded by Mr. Richardson. Then we had the motion to separate the two, storage and living. And then we had another motion.
On storage.
On storage. Motion, did we get a second on that? We got Neesmith as a second on that, all right? So, let's start with the addendum.
I second the original. I second the original when that was questioned.
I need a little help here, Mr. Mayor. What do we need to start with here?
I would recommend that you start with the amendments. You work backwards from the amendment. Stan has the additions to, Commissioner Harville has the amendments in the storage, and then you vote to accept that. And then after that's settled, then you go back to the original motion and what's left of the original motion, which would be residence. You vote on that.
The addendum, then, we will start with the addendum.
Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but once we had a motion to separate, that cancels out the first motion, which was for everything. It has to be redone again because it's, because it does state, for draft version five, it doesn't say parts of.
And, and that, that's not a problem to redo that, take that back. I, I think you can still accept the original motion minus storage. That's my opinion. That's my opinion that you can do that. However, this body is in control of that. If you prefer, then you separate both and revoke both.
So let's go with the addendum. Mr. Harville's motion, gave you a list, was seconded by Mr. Neesmith. Madam Clerk?
Debbie Ahern?
I'm voting yes to Mr. Harville's addendum.
We got two quick, two requests to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Long?
I would ask Mr. Harville to look at D2, the reason the planning commission put it in for the variance on storing in the driveway, that we had people with 1,000 foot, 2,000, 2,500 foot off the road, that the camper couldn't even be seen from the road, and you're telling them you can't put it in a driveway?
No, no, I'm saying they can put it in a driveway.
That wasn't what I, you said do away with provision two.
With part two.
It's provision two.
I'm just, I'm just saying they don't have to come get a variance. It's provision, D2 says provisions allowing storage in a driveway may be required via a variance through the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm saying take that out, you don't have to have that variance if you're parking it in the driveway.
So it doesn't matter what they parked it in? They can park it in front of the house no matter what?
No, there's, there's a provision down there that says campers cannot be stored in front of the residents. Now, there's a variance for topography.
If that driveway comes into the front of the house.
So you're talking about like a circle driveway or something?
Yes. So what are you going to do? I mean, you're saying driveways can be.
Well, I see what you're saying. But I would say if I have a circle driveway, I probably have a driveway down in my basement on the other side that would be more practical to me to put a camper. But you may not.
Most people will.
Yeah, but. But you may not, you know, this, I know, I'm not saying it's perfect. It sure as heck wasn't perfect before. No.
We go back to the 67,000 people versus 18.
Mr. Richardson?
Is it? Sorry.
Just to be clear, there's basically four pieces of paper here. Three of those deal with regulations.
Right.
One deals with definitions. What we're voting on, to be clear, is, Mr. Walker, page one has 6.13, and it has a list of As and Bs. Page two has C, all the way down to G. That would be, in my opinion, considered the storage part of this. Is that a fair statement?
Are you, are you asking me?
I'm just asking anybody.
I, I see it as it's 6.13, and A, A, B, C, D, E, and F are the storage.
Well, D goes over and says the use of a camper as a permanent dwelling is not allowed. So that would be the living section.
No, 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 capital A, and then small a, B, C, D.
So you're only looking at section A?
I'm only looking at that first little section right there, yes, sir.
So what do we do with, if we're voting on storage, what do we do with B and C?
See, I, I see that as, as, as a residence issue.
Yeah. You're talking about big A, big C?
I'm talking big A and big C.
Yeah, we got capital letters or small letters.
Big A, one, two, and three.
So do we need to break it into three sections then?
What would be your third section?
Well, Rodney's saying that he, it's his interpretation that, I'm, I'm not, maybe putting words in your mouth, that B would be for recreational use. But that's actually not, that is not either storage or permanent living.
Right.
I think we go back to the original, we're looking at two different things. One is it, is a storage thing, and then one is a, is a, you know, permanent residence thing as well, anything. It appears that, you know, item D, big D, and 6.14 have to do with campers and tiny homes as residents.
Well, big C, I think addresses that, doesn't it?
Well, it's, you're talking about letting.
I don't know consecutive days.
Yeah. I mean, I, the last, the last time we broke this up, that's the way we broke it up.
I think that's.
That's why I approached.
That's going to be very, very difficult to police.
Well, so do you strike the whole thing, then?
No, I don't think we strike it, I think it needs to be there. Otherwise, you're either saying you can't, if, if you, if you take that, you're either saying you can't camp on your lake property with your camper at all, or you're saying, oh, go live in it.
But you're letting them stay there for 180 days without moving the camper, so that's six months out of the year you're storing it at the lake.
I mean, that's, that's a long time. But that's what we voted on, so.
So I'm still confused. Help me. Help me understand.
We're going to let Mr. Long address this, he's on the planning commission.
Well, I think B deals with the recreational vehicle. That's the way the committee addressed that. A was the storage of the camper. C was the permanent placement of the camper. About living in it. D through G deals with human waste. Addressing issue of, you know, want my address, or trash pickup, or anything like that. I think it's pretty simple, but.
I think it's, I mean, it seems, it seems to be, you know, and then now if we're just wanting to separate it, I don't, I don't think that's an issue, to be quite honest with you, I think we're okay with that. So I say we.
Chairman, if I could, just really quick, if we can amend to, no, amend Section A to what Mr. Harville has said, then we can vote on the whole thing as a whole again, if that's the, the will of the body, it's just that one section is amended. But now we've already done a motion to separate.
Yeah.
So, if I stand corrected on that, because I'm, I'm wrong, I forgot about that part of it.
Well, we can get some, withdraw the motion.
My, my confusion is like, last time when we went through committee, Mr. Walker was real clear that if you vote no for this entire package, you are allowing the two-year variance. Is that correct?
Correct.
No.
A, a no vote, a no vote, a yes vote was allowing the two-year.
Yes, yes, yeah.
A no vote was.
We go what?
To go out tomorrow.
Right. We go by what the building codes are that does not allow campers in the building codes.
So now, a, a yes vote on the storage would be basically a yes on item 613A.
With the amendments.
With the amendments.
As a me.
A yes vote on 613B, C, and D, and 614 would be the living portion.
Right.
Permanent residence, and a yes vote would be to allow them to two years.
Yes. The, the yes vote is simply saying we're accepting the planning commission's recommendation.
But we've amended everything.
But we put some amendments.
Separated everything.
We haven't yet, but we're in the process.
So it seemed like there was confusion last time on what you were actually voting for.
So what we're voting on now is we're voting to accept the motion for the amendments, direct family, can't park it in front, the list that Mr. Harville brought up. And we got a second on that. And we got one vote on that. Okay? If you vote no, then that, then it just reverts back to what is in front of you now. Any questions?
I have one. This is only going to be the storage that he addressed, this has got nothing to do with otherwise.
Storage.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Thomas Doughty?
Yes.
Lynn McGreen?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howes?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
No.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
No.
So the motion passes with the amendments? Those will be written in?
We got it, we got it.
Yeah, we got her vote. An hour and a half ago. Okay, now then, we'll go back. I don't know who made the motion to split.
I'll withdraw that motion.
All right, Mr. Harville withdraws the motion. So now we'll go back to the original, Mr. Walker, and I'm going to ask you to readdress that, or reread that. Okay. We're voting on the draft Vision Five of the recreational vehicle camper tiny home regulations with removing the storage portion.
We're revising.
Revised, okay.
Okay, it's revised, okay.
Okay. So do I need to restate that?
Please, I'm confused as a dable.
Okay, we're, we've amended the storage part, everything else stays the same. Okay? Okay, nothing changed as far as the other part. So we're voting on Vision Five of the recreational vehicle camper tiny home regulations.
So we're voting on vision five of the recreational vehicle camper tiny home regulations. A yes vote will mean that we allow them the additional time before it can be enforced. A no vote means it can be enforced starting when the county feels like it needs to take that initiative.
Mr. Walker?
Madam Clerk?
Wait a minute.
Pardon?
Okay, was she about to call the?
Yes.
Oh, golly. I'm gonna like ask a question.
Go ahead.
There's a temporary placement, there's a permanent placement, and D is no permanent dwelling. Okay. All right, and so. I got the amendment part, I just want to make sure. Now, you can temporarily place it, you can permanently place it, you can't live in it, is that right? Okay, don't.
180 days.
For 180 days, you can, you, yeah, okay. All righty.
Two years, baby. That's two years. Okay, all minds clear?
Yes.
Vote to motion.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Tommy Stoddy?
No.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hawn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
No.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
To me, none of this is, if we don't have somebody looking out for codes, if somebody isn't, if somebody isn't pursuing the disobedience, and we can, we can pass and run rules, but we need people who are out there saying, this is the law, and this is what needs to happen, and here's a bad letter coming to you with all kinds of financial trouble if you don't do what's supposed to be done. Am I right?
You are.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We, that's something that we've addressed, and I want to address this before we adjourn tonight. Tommy McKinney and I have spoken a couple times as our codes enforcement officer. He's a one-man band, and he's playing a lot in. He's got issues spinning, he's running around everywhere, and we, we would like for him to get out there and put a stop to all this nonsense tomorrow. Truth of the matter is, it's, it's an untenable position that he's in. He just cannot do it. He's gonna have to have some help, either part-time or full-time. I don't think part-time will do it. I think he's gonna have to have full-time help. It's gonna be an expense on the county, I understand, but we're gonna have to do something. These next two years are gonna be real vital, I think, for the health, the wealth, and the perception of our county. And I think we have to close ranks, and I think we have to make sure that we don't let this get out of hand. I think, Tommy, you were painted in an unfair picture tonight. I think you do a great job, and I think you're moving quickly. Same with their animal control, we have two officers, and they're everywhere. A lot of times they get called out for animal control, when they get there, the animal's gone. And that dog's not sticking around, he's taking off. So they'll look for the dog, but sometimes they can't apprehend them. I know it's brought up about commissioners getting, I don't know what commissioners are getting three paychecks, not me, but I know that was brought up tonight, and to clear the air on that, I don't have the specifics on that, I don't know of anyone that's receiving three paychecks, you know. So, just because you work for the county doesn't mean you can't be a county commissioner. It'd be like saying if you work for the school system, then you can't be a county commissioner. And that would eliminate a large portion of this group. I know we had a lot of fear on eviction of people. We're doing everything in our power not to do that. As of tonight, we give them two years, and I know some people say, well, they, they don't want to leave their land, but they, they've got to do things. They have to do things same as you and I had to do in order to maintain our house. And they have, they have to take those steps. And if they sit there for the next two years and don't take steps to do that, then they're gonna wind up right back in the same position they're in now. And I know money's tight, and I know, you know, sometimes you live where you can afford and you can't afford anymore, and I understand that. But you cannot, I've saw it, people refusing to work instead of not work. I addressed that last time. So I think that's something we have to keep in mind, that they've got two years from today to comply. I've talked to one of the other commissioners, and he's coming up with a plan, very benevolent, and a very godly man, and wants to be of help to those folks. So we do appreciate that. I found out tonight that one of our, I hope I'm not stepping out of bounds here, but one of our courtroom security, friend to us all, Mr. Harley Kelly, love him to death, he's got to go in for some pretty serious surgery on the 6th of May. And it's very, very dire. So I do ask you to please keep him in your prayers, and let's remember him, because we won't meet again until after his, after his surgery, so please do keep, keep him in mind. Also, we have a couple of gentlemen that wish to address the commission, their commissioners. We'll start with Mr. Doughty. Mr. Doughty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through this vote on the camper, camper study and such, there's been a lot of innuendo put out. A lot of people have bad-mouthed people on this body. Some bad people on this body have bad-mouthed others. We live in a country that is ruled by democracy. That means we vote on things. There has been a vote, yes. I was voted down as far as my delirious. That does not mean that these are bad people. That does not mean these are evil people. These are good people that merely have a difference of opinion of me. When this is over with, we have to work together and respect each other's opinions, and then respect each other. The disrespect that gets shown in here is ridiculous. Yes, I've had difference of opinion, but I've always shook hands and said, hey, we just, we differ on opinions. We need to move forward now that we've done, that we've gone through this. We have other issues to deal with in this county, and we need to do so without holding grudges. And I hope that we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Doughty. So I'd like to allot some time for Commissioner Danny Bell. You have the floor, Mr. Bell.
Chairman Hong, Mayor Kuchel, Belo County Commissioners. Six months ago, I agreed to serve as a commissioner for the 9th District. It has been since that time that I realize that I must make a choice as to where my priorities lie. At the time of my appointment, I thought that I could do the work as a pastor and as a commissioner. However, I realized at this point that that is impossible. I've come to realize that the job as commissioner will take more time than was foreseen. The voters of the 9th District deserve more time than I am able to devote to the issues of our county. I'm not a quitter, but I have come to realize that I must devote my time to God's work and to the people of the church that I have been elected to serve. Thank you, and may God bless you, may God bless our county, may God bless our state and our United States of America. I love you. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Bell and I have spoken, he's spoken with the mayor, and I've told him that I love him dearly, and I respect him highly for making this decision, it's the right one. I hate to see him go, but as you know, when God calls, you better answer. Bell, we're gonna miss you, we support you 100 percent, we love you, you'll be in our prayers and thoughts.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have anyone else? Minds clear? We adjourn.